Shelters and Services. And this recommendation proposes the addition of nearly forty case management workers at DHS to help address caseload. Our recommendation today continues to prioritize quality, safe recreational opportunities for county residents through investment improvement of parks. It provides substantial new funding for improvement of county roads and expansion of mental health and substantive use programs. It maintains library services at current year hours of operation and funding for Spain neuter programs. And it also funds critical investments in business infrastructure such as new countywide emergency communication system for our first responders, along with a new payroll and financial management system which is in bad need of repair. I have some slides to go through real quickly. Again, our overall budget is 2.9 billion. It's broken down the following ways. You can see on the board between the general fund, fire fund, and all other funds. This is our spending. The blue represents what we have available. A large portion of that anyway is pure discretionary and carry forward. The rest are other sources and largely non-discretionary. And here's the fire fund, $151 million total, with the blue piece of the pie representing the general fund contribution to ultimately balance the budget at fire. This chart shows our four-year deficit mitigation work. The top line is the deficit, which in 1617 was 44.5 million dollars. As we have said before, previous meetings and public statements, that this budget before you today closes the general fund deficit going forward, which we're proud of and grateful for. The reason for that has been a series of reductions in spending that departments have taken. That's represented by the second line, a total of $34 million over this period. Lean Six Sigma projects you can throw in there. And, you know, these are the guidelines that we have put out each year up till now. Again, thirty-four, over $34 million in reductions. It's 11.7%. And then use of fund balance carry forward. That line is representative of long-range planning, good planning by our department heads, putting fiscal constraints in place, restrictive hiring practices, being careful about where we're spending our money. And really, this is a credit to all of your department heads, which is, as you can see, that line has played a considerable role in addressing our budget deficit. So that's totals about forty-five, over $45 million. And I'm proud to say that our use of reserves has been prudent. We have always been in the mindset of trying to take our foot off our reserve accelerator in addressing our problems. There are good reasons to have a reserve and maintain a reserve for emergencies. And I'm happy to say that, as noted in this chart, a couple of these fiscal years, including this fiscal year's proposal, is not relying on any reserves to close our deficit. Those reserves are being left in reserve to deal with future financial challenges that we are sure to have. You know, retirement adjustments are just one of those things that we're counting on, among other things, emergencies and other things. This is just another way of looking at it. It's a bar chart. Breaks down what I just described to you in bar form, going all the way to FY 1920, showing that we're closing out our $7 million deficit. This is the same, but a little bit different chart of the fire fund over the same four years, where the last chart showed you the progress that was made on closing our fiscal deficit. This shows you that this is still largely a plan in motion. We started out with a deficit of 75 million dollars in 1617. You can see how that deficit is tracked down to this fiscal year, which is projected to be $6 million. I have a red circle around the four-year total because it's really not yet determined. It could be at least $6 million if nothing gets done, but we're projecting that deficit to grow. And so we're needing to get, have some things done there. We obviously are in mediation with our fire union friends. And we are, we have a fire chief who is working on streamlining operations in his department and finding reductions in spending where he can while continuing to maintain the efficacy of his department countywide. The bottom, the next two lines kind of show you how we've been balancing through department reductions, but largely the deficit there has been increased through upticks in the economy. We've had a stronger economy each and every year, leading to this year. We've used, or I'm sorry, the fire department has used their own fund balance carry forward to address it. They have spent down their reserves to address it. And then the next red circle, you can see that we contributed over with this budget proposal, $24.6 million of general fund money in order to address the need at fire, which is an issue. And then we've, your board is providing $2 million in one-time revenue out of reserves this year to pay for fire equipment, because frankly, we don't have the ability to pay for it. So we are pulling money out of our reserves, putting it toward the purchase of equipment. Right now, it's $2 million. Our proposal is a total of four over a two-year period. With that, I'm going to hand this to Ms. Anderson in my office to do the next two slides.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As Mr. Alsop indicated, at the July budget meetings, we provide your board with the closing fund balance carry forward from June 30th and the final property tax revenue estimates based on the assessor's final assessment role. When we re, then we rebalance the funds and make adjustments to the preliminary budget based on critical needs and board direction received in, in June. A main goal is to align one-time resources such as fund balance carry forward to one-time costs and ongoing resources such as property tax revenue to operational costs. The county ended fiscal year 2018-19 with a net fund balance carry forward of $38.7 million. This amount takes into consideration rebudget of projects that were incomplete at year end and reestablishes budget savings incentives, or BSI, of about $18 million. This net amount is available for allocation in the fiscal year 1920 budget. We have proposed the following one-time costs for this resource. Adding approximately $9 million of new major maintenance projects, of which 2.8 million or 28% is related to parks improvements, and another 6.9 million supports preventative maintenance and critical construction, reconstruction needs that have been deferred through the fiscal crisis and will result in increased costs if not addressed. Adding the cost of the, of $6 million towards the replacement of the county's HR, payroll, and financial system. An increase of $2 million in designations for your board's priority of new homelessness initiatives. An increase of $2.1 million in designations related to various approved economic opportunity areas such as West Stars, Oil Dell, Arvin, Lost Hills Renew Biz, and countywide blight remediation. Adding funding for the direct cash purchase of sheriff vehicles totaling $1.5 million. An increase of designations towards the purchase of a new first responders communication systems of $4.4 million. And an increase of designations towards, towards first responders retention and recruitment of $2 million. The last item of safety, retirement, and other remaining balance of $11.7 million is primarily the conversion of $10.3 million of pension cost increase from reserves to fund balance carry forward in order to preserve reserves balances for the future. The remainder is a budget gap of $1.4 million for operations. In addition to fund balance carry forward, the assessor's final assessment role and other minor discretionary revenue updates are increasing revenue by $8.9 million in ongoing resources from the preliminary, preliminary budget presented in June. The assessor's final net assessed value of total role is $98.6 billion, which is an increase of $3.9 billion or 4% from fiscal year 1819 adopted budget. The overall change in revenue from the preliminary budget is $8.9 million, of which 7.7 million is related to property tax revenue. We have proposed the following ongoing adjustments for this source. Apply $3.3 million to the operations budget gap from June of $4.7 million. This leaves the $1.4 million to be covered by fund balance carry forward previously listed. Adding costs for proposed negotiated salary increases totaling $4.3 million for certain safety personnel to promote recruitment and retention. Adding funding of $300,000 for ranger staffing to provide near 24/7 coverage to the Kern River Parkway area. And finally, adding lease payments for, for costs for sheriff vehicles of $992,000. These adjustments listed net the additional resources from year end to zero and balance the general fund. We have been thoughtful in the reallocation of the resources based on comments made by your board in June and are happy to take any further direction and include it in the final recommended budget in August.
Just to follow that, thank you, Ms. Anderson. Wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about law enforcement and the recommended budget to address recruitment and retention challenges sheriff's, sheriff's office. Given the, last week, there was an announcement. This budget proposes in, in new annual spending, $7 million to the sheriff's department. That $7 million is broken down, broken down the following ways. Goes toward entry-level deputy reclassifications, which your board voted to do in March of this year, of $1.1 million. Salary step increase for all sworn detention officer positions at the sheriff's department, which your board, board voted March of this year to do, $1.8 million. The red represents the items that were added following your board's vote on the 25th. Three watch lieutenant positions to deal with 24/7 operational coverage in the sheriff's operational area. That is approximately $850,000 annually. And then elevating base annual compensation of all sworn deputy sheriff ranks at the Kern County Sheriff's Department at $3.3 million annually going forward. In addition to that, new one-time spending of $3.3 million is broken, broken down the following ways. Spending for a training academy for the Kern County Sheriff's Office is $1.3 million. That was included in the preliminary budget you adopted. New and added, it's a special reserve designation for recruitment and retention bonuses at the Kern County Sheriff's Office totaling $2 million. That's one, those are both one-time funds. And that retention recruitment bonus will be used by the sheriff to deal with what we believe is a fairly significant business problem in his department, in addition to the, what was mentioned above. So total proposed new annual one-time spending in 2019-20, just for the sheriff's office, is $10.3 million. And finally, just to mention our, our public budget meetings going forward, we have two upcoming meetings. One will be tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. It'll be the morning session. I believe it's, we're doing something on lightning in a bottle tomorrow just before, but this will be the, really the only substantial agenda item tomorrow morning. So we invite everybody to show up for that if they'd like. And then we'll have a final hearing on Tuesday, August 27th at 9:00 AM. And with that, we will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Alsop. So now we'll open this, any comments or questions from the board before we open it up? Seeing none, I'll just open it up for a comment on this item. How many here would like to speak? Show our hands. Why don't we get those of you that would like to speak that are in the front row to speak first? And then if you'd like to, like to speak to us, please come down to the front row and, and take a seat down there as you see one open up so you can get up to the microphone quickly. Who'll be first? By the way, we'd like to, give me a rough idea. Show me your hands again. How many, how many are out there? How many would you like? Have you practiced your speech and you can't possibly cram it into two minutes? Because I know I can't talk, I can barely talk for two minutes. You know, we're going to try to keep you to two minutes, but if you go over here and you're saying something substantive, I might let you go a little bit further. Start with the substantive stuff first. Who'll be first? No, this is the test on the two-minute rule right, right away, isn't it?
I'd like to say, pray God bless our-
Do your best.
Yeah, bless our supervisors and our chairman. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to come up. And the Lord would like our supervisors and the Lord himself. Sometimes you can get your door open, but the Lord would just like to supervise, he's going to close your door for you. And so I'd also like to say, if I was asking anybody here right now in this room, who would like to die now or tonight? Nobody would. So when we look at law enforcement, they make it possible for us to feel this way. Whether you're rich, poor, sad, or happy PhD, no matter what your profession is, it wouldn't mean nothing if you did not have law enforcement. God Almighty, Jesus Christ, said, "There are His ministers." So what I'm saying, when we're looking at this budget, we're looking at the money, no town could really make it without law enforcement. You gotta have them, you gotta have a fire department and a district attorney. I'm never going to stop saying that. You need somebody to take care of criminals. All of us value our stuff. The fire department take care of that. You can fill this room up right now with people that could have died of heart attack if the fire department wasn't there. And law enforcement, you see the evil out there. There's so evil out there now, it is really scary. Now, that's the truth. Everything that you do for them, you doing for us. See, because they the ones getting out there putting their life on the line. When they say buy the wife and kids and look at their check, it don't add up, but they still go. So rainy day fund, extra money, however you do it, let's get the money for them. There's 1% things, one of your greatest servant, Sheriff Donna Youngblood, who the Lord made a prince, made an ideal for the 1%, and I'm with him. The three mothers is hollering the same thing. Don't be ashamed to ask the public for the money. That's what they did in the Bible. See, the problem here that I'm seeing since I've been coming is money. You can have reserve, you can shorten down, you can save, but if you ain't paying the people for doing the work, that don't mean nothing to them. You gotta have happy workers like we want you happy, see? And so we gotta do something to get that money in here. So if we can get that in there and the, and the public says yes, and they will, they just need a better understanding, that'll make everything so much better. I'm a part of downtown Bakersfield finest, and they are so happy with the 1% they got in. I mean, happy, joyful, everything. That's what we got to do for the sheriff department, the fire department, district attorney. We gotta make them happy. You know exactly what you're doing. And we want our leaders that we put in control, because they are leaders out there, we want them to be able to tell you exactly what they need to make it run. Because see, you know what makes this run? And they want to make their departments run too, yes. Am I on?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I am. But the only thing I'm just saying, let's do anything that we can for them. And thank you, Chairman.
Give us your name, please. Give us your name, please.
Oh, yes. Curtis James Bingam Senior, Street Advantage for our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten son of the Holy Father God. I gotta work on this speed. That's why I left that part out, because I was trying to get in there. Because this is, is-
Well, that's a long name.
Yeah. Well, it's honoring the Lord. And remember what the Lord said, "He gonna close your door."
Thank you very much.
Pray God bless you.
Hi, so did he set the tone for three minutes?
Well, he didn't quite get to three. I started trying to stop him around two.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Veronica Vazquez. I'm a social worker five with the Department of Human Services, and I am the SEIU 521 Chapter President, which represents over 4,000 county employees who are also Kern County constituents. I have been with the county for nearly 12 years, where I have served along with many talented employees who have worked tirelessly to ensure the safety and well-being of Kern County residents. To be clear, Kern County members within our chapter are responsible for an incredible amount of support for our community and fellow agencies. Everything from legal assistance to road maintenance, in-home social services, child protective services, park rangers, to aging and adult. Many of our members also make up the security of our county operations within the IT department, as well as the prompt emergency response and dispatch. We truly make this county function. Today, we are here because we believe in you. As the elected Board of Supervisors, we know that you have the authority to ensure the urgent needs to our workers are addressed. With me here today are committed employees of our county that have stood with you throughout the years, many new and old, who believe you can help raise us up to be the best county where we can support the needs of our community and our families. We know that you care about the health and safety of our community, and we've seen it in your interest to learn about our challenges. I'd like to thank Supervisor Couch and Supervisor Perez for their willingness to meet with workers and learn firsthand the issues impacting in the workplace. The concerns of our coworkers are real, and they impact our ability to provide the best service to our residents. It is equally important to also mention that due to our members' efforts to engage with the Board of Supervisors, they have been met with attempts of retaliation of a newly imposed limitations on both union representatives and our very own Board of Supervisors. These actions are clear examples of the systematic failure on behalf of management's priorities. Here with me today, I have a copy for each of you in regards to the DHS policies that were emailed on 7/29 to staff after the Board of Supervisors visited our agency. It is Visitors in the Workplace, DHS Badge Insurance, and Building Access. So I have a copy for you guys.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comments?
Almost.
Can you-
Wrap it up?
Bring them to a close, please.
There have been multiple occasions at various work sites through our county where workers have expressed their concerns, including the inaction to invest in workers in this budget, yet not have warranted any response for any director or U.S. board leaders. We are here because we truly care about the needs of our community and the safety of our coworkers. We are here to inform you that residents will continue to fall through the cracks while employees of this county continue to struggle. We cannot and should not allow our county to rank one of the lowest in the state in health outcomes. We should not be increasing the mental health issues every year like the previous four years, and we should not be the county who refuses to properly address the increasing cost of living challenges impacting county employees. So before I wrap up at this time, I'd like to make a request to Mr. Chairman. I would like to play an audio recording statement from a fellow Kern County employee, also a constituent, who initially wanted to speak via video conference from Ridgecrest. She was asked by staff member of Board Member Gleason's office to consider submitting her comments via email. If I may, I would like to play her statement now, please.
I'm not sure how, how do you want to play that? What are you, what are you saying?
A video, uh, audio. I was going to put it on my phone, and it's going to play, it's an audio.
How long is it?
It's around two and a half minutes. If not, I'll stand in line again.
She, you know what, why don't, why don't you do that? Because you've gone four.
Okay.
And-
That's fine.
We're trying to keep it to two. So I'm trying to allow as many people to speak as possible.
No, I understand. I'm actually doing this for another, another person.
I understand that.
Okay, I'll stand in line. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Briefer-Gosse. I'm a Kern County constituent and one of the thousands of public safety and support employees who serve this community. I began my career with the county in November of 2000 with the sheriff's department, and I've been a supervising departmental analyst for ETR since January of 2008 and have been topped out at E Step since 2010. What I want to address tonight are the real insignificant differences between things like step increases, promotions, and special pays versus an increase to base pay via a real salary increase and/or a cost of living adjustment. It's come to my attention that Mr. Alsop has countered stories of frozen salaries with assertions that those employees have received promotions or step increases during the past 12 years, thus arguing it hasn't really been that long. Even for those of us who have received promotions or step increases, unless a job title has been reclassified or the salary adjusted, the failure to increase wages at all ranges and steps means that our new salary is not going to be what it should be. It might be more than what we were making before, but we're still promoting into the 2007 wage for that position. And I'll say that again for the people in the back. We are being paid 2007 wages in 2019. Our wages have been at a standstill while the costs of everything from groceries to gasoline have increased dramatically. In addition, special pays are not pensionable, as you know, obviously, that's a budget issue. But people nearing retirement are running out of time to win an increase that will put them anywhere near where they should be by the time their pensions are calculated, if the county refuses to, to increase our salaries commensurate with our responsibilities. Nobody went into public service to get rich. Most of us chose this life out of a desire to be of service and, yes, a willingness to trade a certain amount of salary risk in exchange for earning a fair negotiated wage available to everyone in the same job title, a good affordable health plan, and a pension that would be sufficient and secure, if not grand.
Could I ask you to bring your comment to-
I'm wrapping it up. We, we've been willing to trade a good deal of salary for those benefits over the last 12 years, but 12 years is a gap that is simply untenable. You've already learned you can't hire or keep patrol deputies this way, and I urge you to dip into those reserves for those of us in SEIU 521. You can't run a county without qualified employees, and you, and your ability to hire and retain employees with not just the education, but the real-world experience to deliver an acceptable level of service to residents is crumbling. It's long past time to raise base pay to levels that are commensurate with those in other areas. We've sacrificed enough. Thank you.
Could you give us your net last name, please? I'm sorry. This is what happens when, and I'm going to, I'm going to ask politely if you would just, please keep the clapping to a, to a bare minimum. We really don't need that. And ma'am, we did not catch your last name. That's what I was saying when, you couldn't hear me. We got your first name. Could you come to the microphone and give us your last name? We, the first name is, is Karen, right?
My first name is Karen with a K.
Okay.
My last name is Briefer-Gosse, B as in boy, R I E, F as in frank, E R dash, G as in George, O S as in Sam, E. It's one of those annoying hyphenated things.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Morales Board, C A R M E N, M O R A L E S hyphen B O A R D. I am an RN and a nurse practitioner with almost 30 years nursing experience. I have resided in Kern County for 37 years, and I live in the 3rd District. First, I believe it is essential that the county ensure that public services are delivered by a knowledgeable and experienced workforce via competitive salaries and working conditions that promote high-quality service delivery. When workers feel valued, they remain on the job. High turnover rates, job stress, and substandard working conditions hurt everyone and put vital services in jeopardy. Secondly, there is currently a troublesome and ongoing problem at DHS concerning an infestation of bedbugs that continues to negatively affect the health and morale of DHS employees. To my knowledge, the bedbug problem was first identified in 2017, and I've been told is still unresolved. I believe because many employees were unaware on how to prevent, identify, or treat this problem, it escalated into a serious issue that is still affecting that work site and the community that seeks services at that location. I know, as a nurse practitioner, how to treat bedbugs, treat those bites, recognize complications, and educate people on how to prevent, identify, and eliminate bedbugs. To my knowledge, staff education by those knowledgeable and experienced on this issue was inconsistent or lacking. I recently had the opportunity to informally speak to some DHS employees, and to most, it was the first time they had been educated on this subject. So, how can we as a county be prepared for worse outbreaks or disasters when we have not adequately addressed this issue at one of our own facilities? I believe that serious gaps in personnel and resources negatively affect everyone, and that insufficient resources contributed to the bedbug problem at DHS. I'm wondering what it will take to modify the leadership of this county to protect the workers and the community in which they live and serve by committing to hire and retain a skilled workforce by increasing wages and improving working- a skilled workforce by increasing wages and improving working conditions. Serious gaps in county services are detrimental to all of us. Please remember that substandard pay, substandard working conditions equals substandard county services.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I have some bedbug information.
Please.
And back are the resources that I used.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Supervisor Perez.
Yes, Carmen. Carmen, can I ask you a question, please? I went out to the site. I'd like an opportunity to talk with you privately, maybe with the chairman, as he was out there. Fantastic. So I'd like to get some expertise around the issue and really make sure that we are partnering, because I know the chairman cares, and he's been out there and looking at it, and I appreciate your expertise. So I want you to know we're united in wanting to make real progress here, and, you know, the coalition is a good thing. So your number's there. My staff will contact you. It's good to see you. And, yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Tracy Schofner, S-H-O-F-N-E-R, and I'm a social worker too and have worked at the Department of Human Services for 15 years. I'm here today, like my fellow coworkers, to say that I too contribute to the public safety of the county, yet I have not received a raise in over 12 years. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to speak as a social worker, because I am committed as an employee and have a strong desire to promote, but I'm finding it financially difficult to stay. As a recent facilitator, I interacted with parolees, gang members, individuals with behavior and mental health concerns, homelessness, domestic violence, depression, anxiety, suicide, and the unemployed. As a skilled and experienced social service worker, I would quickly assess barriers on a day-to-day level and quickly deliver resources and solutions to assist our clients here in Kern County, helping them become self-sufficient and decreasing Kern County's poverty rate, and increasing our welfare participation rate and reducing our state sanctions. As a social worker, I protect and serve families here in Kern County, and I am responsible for ensuring the safety of a child, which can mean the life or death in some situations. Are you willing to risk losing experienced social workers? According to our director, Deana Murphy, DHS services almost 42% of Kern County residents with approximately 82% of those of being a children. Over 50,000 individuals enter OC sales on a monthly basis, and I have been subjected to unsafe work environment, unfair wages, and denial of flex promotion. Going to work every day, I risk my safety by ensuring the safety of others by providing a service and protecting the population that we serve. I received notice from DHS Safety Department that we received a threat that we were all going to die and be shot and killed at 9:30, but was told that the maintenance crew had been notified. I have de-escalated numerous fights, secured victims in areas to flee from their abusers, and engaged with gang members without proper training. I risk my safety and ensure our children are protected, safe, and healthy in their homes, yet my contributions to the department aren't considered public safety for our Kern County residents. There are many DHS employees who struggle to make ends meet, have two jobs, and do without, and it is not acceptable. I am respectfully requesting that you ensure this budget begins to invest in the immediate and urgent needs of our employees. It is time that the Board of Supervisors recognizes the importance of all employees here at the Department of Human Services, which again, services...huh?
We're at 2 minutes and 24 seconds.
42% of Kern County's population, and make room to increase wages or risk losing more skilled, experienced workers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rosario Romero. I'm a human services supervisor with the Department of Human Services located at 3041 Wilson Road, also known as the Kinship Office. I've been employed with the county and this department for 18 years, and I'm a constituent of District 4. I understand that today's meeting is to discuss the proposed budget, and I come to you to discuss today the issues that is related directly to our county's unwillingness to invest in the needs of our workers and their safety. This has been a reoccurring issue for the past three years. In November of 2017, it was at its worst when the entire office had to be bombed, and as a result, employees were affected by fumes. Some had trouble breathing and ended up with respiratory infections and had to be moved to other office sites. Just recently, in June of this year, live bedbugs were found in our office and reported on the following dates: June 13th, June 26th, June 28th, July 1st, July 2nd. As a result, spot spraying was conducted in the reported areas, and email was sent out to our program director from the workers that were affected demanding to be relocated on July 3rd. Then on July 4th is when I, myself, discovered I had bedbugs in my home. I was woken up by my children in the middle of the night, and they found them crawling on my pillow, on my body, on my mattress. At that moment, I immediately wrapped up my sheets, my pillows, everything, threw it away. I ended up sleeping in the couch from that day forward, me and my children. The following day, I told my APD, which is my assistant program director, filed my report, uploaded my pictures. They advised me to contact Dewey, that I would get the county discount. I did so. At that point, I contacted Dewey. They didn't come out. They eventually did come out, gave me a quote of $3,500 to tent my house, and that's what I needed to be done. At this point, I can't afford that. I know that if I can't afford it, my coworkers can't afford it, because there's other people in our office that were affected and brought at home. All I'm asking is help in some way to either grant our claims that we made to the county or some assistance. The county in our office, the people, the management in our office, they have sprayed, they have tried, they've done their attempts, but they're also asking us to take care of our things at home, and it's financially impossible at this point. So I ask that you consider those grants, those claims to be granted. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Ryan, when would be the appropriate time to have the conversation about the specific issue, which is of...time is of the essence, it would seem. I don't know if we do that tomorrow. We can meet specially, and I'd like to involve Carmen, who was here earlier. When do you think that would be appropriate? And then, of course, Chairman, I know you've been very engaged on the issue, so I don't want to get ahead of myself.
No, no, go ahead.
But I'm curious when we should talk about the grants. I know it's very expensive to get these homes treated. I don't know that...I don't know what the nature of what we cover and what we don't cover, but I have an 18-year employee here saying they're sleeping on the couch after throwing their things away after what appears to be potentially connected to their line of work, and without making a judgment either way, I just...what should we do about that particular request, which seems to be, I think, particularly distasteful?
Well, Chairman Couch, Supervisor Perez, I obviously don't have the answer to that now, but I will...I think that if it's a conversation you want to have, I should get together with our county council and figure out what options we have as a county to do something like that and maybe report back to your board.
Thank you.
Can I jump in on that? Let me just say, it was my understanding that the department and county council had met, had discussed the issue, and you had determined a course of action. I didn't want to jump into the middle of the conversation with each and every speaker tonight, but Margot, is there anything that you would like to add to this? Excuse me, Ms. Razan. Is there...can you clarify what has taken place to date? Maybe answer some of the questions that are gonna come up.
Certainly, Supervisor Couch.
Can I interject just quickly?
Sure.
Chairman, if we don't have the answers now, we have a lot of people to speak. This is very particular and very detailed. Perhaps we can do this tomorrow morning. Chairman, I'm happy to meet with you and talk about next steps. I'm not suggesting right now is the best time to do that, given all the speakers and all of the important matters we're addressing, but certainly I want to put it on the radar and say I want to be part of helping to resolve this. Clearly, the chairman's in, so perhaps we can follow up with each other tomorrow, and we'll follow up with you ASAP, if that's okay. I don't mean to step on your toes. I just...I don't want to demand something that I don't think we need right now necessarily.
I'm more interested in what they've done to date so far, and I think your question is...
Moving forward.
Moving forward.
Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman Couch, it is my understanding that my office, working with Department of Human Services, has come up with a...it's still being revised or kind of finalized as a plan, but working with Dewey Pest Control and the purchasing department regarding the contract that the county has with Dewey Pest Control to provide pest control services generally for county projects. Employees who believe that they have a problem with bedbugs have been encouraged or told to have to contact Dewey Pest Control, who will come out and do an assessment of their home or their residence. Number of employees have done that, then they are...and we've just received claims that have been filed, and just today, I know at least two of members of my staff spent a couple of hours working on figuring out the best way to go about having their employees' residences fumigated, or there's different heat treatments and how that can be most quickly implemented, and with the county needs to review each individual claim. It's not just a blanket pay for everybody, but when employees have been told to submit a claim, which will then be reviewed by my office and as appropriate paid. The Dewey Pest Control part will be paid.
Chairman, thank you. So it sounds like there's progress being made.
Absolutely.
I know this...I hear July 4th, we're almost in August, so I want to get some answers to you right away, and so we'll all communicate with you tomorrow, work with my chairman. Please provide your contact to my CAO, Ryan Alsop. I know he's very concerned about this matter, and we were talking about it an hour ago, and we want...and talking about you specifically. So we are moving, I promise you, and I'm sure that's not comfort when you're sleeping on the couch, but certainly I want to connect with you tomorrow. Thank you for bringing this to our attention and allowing the board to understand more fully the complexities of this issue. I appreciate it. So if you could provide your contact, we'll get moving, and thank you, Council. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
All right, good evening. My name is John Rozo. Last name is spelled R-O-Z as in zebra, O. I'm a constituent in McGleeson's District 1, and I'm here to respectfully request consideration of a substantial increase for all Kern County employees. In discussing some brief observations, I hope to gain compassion for my argument in the hopes of having my closing request considered. I was looking at the information provided in Launch Kern that stated that recently Kern County Sheriff's Office in the outlying areas of the county now has access to virtual met through an iPad. The excitement of the endless possibilities of KCSO being able to immediately have access to the county's resources to help constituents get the resources they need is amazing. Freeing them up, KCSO take the next...excuse me, have access to the resources to help constituents get the resources they need. Freeing them up to take the next call for assistance while ensuring that the constituent is now in the hands of a trained specialist from the various departments available in the county. Trained, because that would be in the spirit of Launch Kern, to create an efficient county that is not wasteful, to take risks on the people that have dedicated themselves to assisting our constituents for years and for years to come. We should be giving them the confidence and encouragement that any constituent will be proud of receiving. I believe that it's these types of interactions that are difficult to compute into our program. If Launch Kern could be programmed to understand the value of having seasoned staff that are not motivated by the prospect of promotion, but motivated in knowing that today another constituent will receive the services they are eligible for, this is an invaluable and incalculable variable. I am a program technician for the Department of Aging and Adult Services, where I take elder independent adult abuse reports, provide information referrals to constituents of Kern County, and provide assistance with Medicare problems and other health insurance issues for seniors and disabled adults. I love the feeling of helping constituents attain the resources that can be difficult to find at times. For these reasons, I am respectfully requesting my supervisor, McGleeson, encourage the supervisors to request the CO to make an alternate budget that would include a substantial increase for all Kern County employees for your review and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll be next.
Hello, my name's Veronica Vasquez. I'm gonna play a recording from a social worker that's from Ridgecrest who had requested to do a video conference, something that's offered from the Board of Supervisors, but instead she was asked to send an email, so I'm gonna do her video for her...or her audio for her.
This is your...Veronica, give us your last name again. Vasquez? Oh, I'm sorry. The name of the...
It's Jackie Maxwell.
Thank you.
...by explaining I attempted to video conference in from Ridge...attempted to video confer...attempted to video conference in... Sorry. ...conference in from Ridgecrest, but to assist in using county funds the best way possible, it was decided I would record this message instead. My name is Jacqueline Maxwell. I have been a resident of Ridgecrest for decades, and currently I'm one of the only two child protective services, emergency response, or ER, social service worker stationed in the Ridgecrest District Office. I'm grateful for the opportunity to advocate for my community and especially for our children. I began working for CPS over one decade ago in the Ridgecrest Office. At the time, there were five ER social service workers stationed in Ridgecrest and two additional backup workers...additional backup workers stationed in Lake Isabella. Within a couple of years, the number of workers stationed in Ridgecrest decreased to two, and...two. Decreased to two, and one or two backup workers at the lake. From 2013 to 2015, I became the only ER worker in Ridgecrest, which was insufficient to meet the needs of my community. At some point, more staff was obtained. Unfortunately, with the exception of my current coworker, who will soon retire, all the other workers were not retained. There have been several instances where there have been no ER workers working in the Ridgecrest area to respond to urgent calls. Since at least last August, myself and my Ridgecrest coworker have asked and pleaded for additional staff, and as of yet, there has been no true evidence of progress. Rather than providing additional staff, our two backup workers from the lake have been relocated, and we recently learned our extra help aide will now be going to a different program, even though he has made it clear he does not want to leave ER. Additionally, management has been advised the current job opening for Ridgecrest actually states the location for this position is in Bakersfield, which obviously deters Ridgecrest residents from applying, yet this has not yet been remedied. In approximately one year, there will...the only other ER worker in Ridgecrest will retire, and she has repeatedly reminded management of this, as it takes at least one year to get a new worker trained. We are told everything possible is being done, but this is difficult to believe when, as mentioned previously, not even simple things as correcting the location of the posted job have been addressed. It is imperative additional staff is obtained and retained in the Ridgecrest Office. I do not exaggerate when I say lives depend on it, vulnerable lives. I am not the only person who has noticed child abuse and neglect in this community has drastically escalated. Last August, Ridgecrest Regional Hospital became so concerned with the drastic increase in severe cases, they set up a community forum on child abuse and invited several agencies to discuss, and I quote, "Why does the problem seem worse now?" End quote. This community needs your attention and assistance so it can receive the timely and needed assistance children and other parts of the county receive. Previously, I have provided ideas and suggestions on possible ways to address the staffing concerns to our management team and director, and now I'm making you aware. I'm hopeful more ideas will be offered in the near future so this issue can be resolved in a timely manner. Thank you once again.
Thank you for your time. That was Jackie Maxwell, social worker from Ridgecrest.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll connect with Jackie about this and her superiors, her department heads. Just wanted to say that the reason she was not able to video conference is because of a staffing issue. My staff is having very difficult medical times, was unable to come in and open up the office far, but thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. We'll be next.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. My name is Deborah McClanahan, and I work in DHS at the Mojave District Office. I have been with the county for 12 years, and I am also a constituent of District 2. I am here today because I believe it's important that you, as the Board of Directors, understand the extraordinary disservice services that we are providing for our residents across Kern County and more specifically, our outlying rural communities. During my last public comments here, I brought up a few concerns regarding our inability to provide adequate services to the needs... to provide adequate services to the needs of our ever-growing homeless population. One of the main concerns is the lack of services offered that provide direct mental health to the residents in need. Just like the need for services here in the urban areas of Kern County, we have seen a drastic increase in the need for service in our rural areas. However, we do not see an increase in staff to meet the growing demands. Too often, appointments are double booked on workers' schedules, leading to poor evaluations on employees' E P Rs. The specific challenges are just additional obstacles that many of our coworkers have to face. They add additional mountains to climb when workers are committed to obtaining salary increases, promotions, and opportunities of growth and development. These are all additional challenges our members and coworkers face. As you continue to hear and evaluate the budget proceedings that will lead to an approved budget, it is important to understand that the safety and security of our members is vitally important to ensuring that our residents obtain the most adequate services available to them. I ask that you please consider the needs of our coworkers and our families as you make your final budget decisions. I thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Michelle Salazar. I'm a constituent of District Three, and I'm a social worker for DHS. I'm a public safety employee, and I protect Kern County's most vulnerable and valuable residents, our children. I have worked for the county for nearly 11 years, and I am here to tell you that I, along with my coworkers, feel left behind. Today, as you continue your deliberations on the next budget, I ask that you take into consideration the urgent role our frontline workers and support staff play in ensuring the safety and health of our community. Our county agencies cannot and will not function properly, and the needs of our community will continue to suffer if you elect to disregard the immediate need to invest in our workforce. As our staff continue to reduce in number, the community's needs continues to grow. As I have stated publicly before, we are continuing to lose high-quality, educated, and experienced workers for higher-paying wages and better benefits. Those left behind suffer from low morale, burnout, hopelessness, and a loss of faith in our leaders. Our community deserves better. Not only are we losing experienced workers, we are losing thousands of dollars in tax funds to train new workers who also leave for higher-paying positions once they have been trained, resulting in unnecessary and unjustifiable waste. Your employees should be valued as assets of the county. As we take on the duty of tackling the real issues that impact our county, such as drug dependency, child abuse and neglect, mental health, infectious diseases, and homelessness, among many others. Since 2008, the cost of living has risen significantly while our income has remained the same. Employees can no longer meet the needs of their families while struggling to meet the needs of the community. I beg you to stop leaving your employees behind. Funds can be found within our community budget and reserves to address our needs, and this has been proven by the recent approval allocation of funds to other agencies by this very board. Just a few minutes ago, you guys proposed money to fix parks and to invest in a payroll system, but you're not advocating to invest in your employees. I call on you yet again, as our elected board leaders, to stand with us as county workers. I plead with you to ensure that the approved budget addresses the needs of this community and the needs of those who work one-on-one with its citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be next. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Couch and Board of Supervisors. My name is Francisco Martinez. I am a 15-year county employee. I am a CPS social service worker and S A U union member. I became involved in union activism because I am involved in community organizing to address issues in distressed communities of color through my work with Faith in the Valley. After working for almost 10 years in community organizing to address issues in distressed communities, a few years ago, I started to realize that at my work site at the Department of Human Services at the O C sales building, they started to take on the same characteristics of some of these distressed communities. You see, the human body cannot distinguish between physiological or physical stress. The body will create the same amount of adrenaline and the same amount of cortisol hormone under physiological and physical stress. It's the old fight-or-flight response. My coworkers have been taking on higher caseloads, increasing job expectation, increasing responsibilities, responsibilities, which causes management to institute disciplinary measures for unrealistic expectations. This makes coworkers more vulnerable for termination, especially if they are too fearful to file grievances. In Maslow's hierarchy of needs, which is one of the most prominent motivational theories in psychology, it states that there are five needs that a person must ascend in order to be able to live and work at their peak level. There are the psychological needs, which is food, water, shelter, sleep, et cetera; safety needs, which is security, freedom from fear, order, stability, et cetera; then there is love and belonging needs, esteem needs, and self-actualization needs. I want to mention the first two needs, the physiological and safety needs, because that best describes the needs of my coworkers. But even under such duress, DHS county workers have been able to provide services to the most vulnerable in our community while sacrificing wage increases, paying more into our medical insurance, and retirement. Many coworkers give themselves for their clients and for the communities. You truly have unspoken heroes in your presence. In closing, my Department of Human Services coworkers are making a case tonight that they deserve to be rightfully compensated for fighting the good fight against poverty while we ourselves have gone without for, for too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. We'll be next. I just said, "Thank you."
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Susan Price. I am a constituent of District Two. I am a human services technician and have been with the county for nearly five years. Like my coworkers have stated before me, I too am a part of the public safety services we provide as a county. Although I may not be directly working with other public safety agencies, I, along with my coworkers, are responsible for the accurate and timely processing of thousands of residents' claims for support. To be completely honest, we must, we much rather be spending these afternoons with our loved ones and family. Many of the workers you heard speak here today all come from so many different backgrounds. But at the end of the day, we all want similar things in life: good jobs, steady incomes, and the ability to provide for our families without having to worry about the financial burdens we endure. In many ways, we are like you, board members. We work in the county we reside. We are passionate about the work and services we provide to the community, and we also believe in what we are advocating for. The challenges our workers face are real, and the issues impacting our community's health and safety are real. There is no coincidence that these issues are tied together with stagnant wages in place within our county. We just are not doing enough to keep up with the cost of living, which has increased dramatically since the recession. This is unacceptable. As a human services technician, I meet folks in our community who are struggling every day and who are utilizing public assistance. It is a shame to know that in many, I'm sorry, in many situations, our very own county employees also depend on these programs to survive. As board leaders, it is your responsibility to make every effort to bring solutions to the challenges we face in the workplace, which include appropriate staffing, oversight of subpar working conditions, and the safety and health of the employees that make this county work. We are ready to work alongside you.
Ms. Price.
And your staff to find solutions together, but it takes the commitment from you in this budget. We look forward to welcoming you to more walk-a-days alongside our members. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be next. Good evening.
Hi. Thank you, Chairman Couch and the rest of the board. My name is Asha Chandy. I'm a resident of Bakersfield and District Four, and I'm also part of the Community of Addis Unabked Action Team, which is part of Building Healthy Communities South Kern. Before I go on, I just wanted to recognize all of our C U members, so if you're in the audience, please raise your hand or stand up if you're in line as well. Now, the C U team believes that health doesn't happen in the doctor's office, that in order to truly improve the safety and quality of life for all communities, we should prioritize investing in disadvantaged communities and work with residents to select projects that directly benefit their neighborhoods, primarily healthy land use planning and increased investment in basic infrastructure. Thank you for letting us speak and provide comments on the 2019-2020 budget, because not only does this budget represent the priorities of the public, it also reflects the outreach and engagement process the county conducts. The following 10 to 12, maybe more speakers are all from the C U team, and they're not only advocacy organizations and nonprofits, they're also residents who live, work, and play in these historically underserved communities, including Lamont, Arvin, Lost Hills, Greenfield, and unincorporated Bakersfield neighborhoods. So what happens in these communities is a reflection of the budget priorities, and it's also a reflection of the quality of life in Kern County as a whole. Thank you once again, Chairman Couch and the rest of the board, for letting us comment on these, on the recommendations for the 2020 budget and allowing residents to have a valid stake in the future of Kern County.
Thanks. Thank you. Excuse me. Could you give us your name again?
My first name is Asha, A-S-H-A, last name Chandy, C-H-A-N-D-Y.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. Good evening, Chairman, Board of Supervisors, and staff. I just want to start off by saying my name is Gustavo Aguirre Jr. I'm with Central California Environmental Justice Network and also a member of the Community of Addis Unabked Action Team with Building Healthy Communities. And I just want to start off with, first of all, thanking and giving gratitude to the board of supervisors, as, you know, for the past weeks and months, you, we've been able to exchange meetings, sitting down with leadership, not only from the board of supervisors, but also from the staff, to look at the different priorities in these different disadvantaged rural communities. As you know, it, the data shows that based on your zip code is based on the longevity and sustainability of your life, and in more disadvantaged and more rural and more overburdened communities, your lifespan is actually shorter than in more affluent communities, right? And this goes to shows the funding infrastructure and the funding systems that exist in, in these different kinds of communities. And so by, some of the biggest takes away, takeaways that we've seen from these different conversations is safety, right? And in different communities, safety means, has a different definition. And in a lot of these communities where the zip codes, you know, reduce their lifetime because of the infrastructure around them, because of the lack of infrastructure, the lack of access, the lack of green spaces and parks, because of that, we're asking, we're requesting that the board of supervisors with this, you know, fiscal year 19 and 20, prioritize and investing in, primarily in disadvantaged rural communities and their parks, both on sustainable approaches, long-term approaches of park maintenance, lighting in spaces, soccer programs and facilities, senior recreation centers, and foremost mentoring programs and community centers that are run, that are run by the county. And so we want to thank you guys for this ability to be able to share these thoughts, to be able to share these different concerns, and highlight the different needs in our communities, especially these rural disadvantaged communities. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Adi Yinka Glover, and I work at Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability, and I'm also part of the C U Action Team. I want to say thank you for hosting this evening meeting, and for the public who may not be available to attend during the day. This is important subject matter, and so we're happy to see that the county has opened the space in the evening. I'll be discussing our flooding ask. We appreciate the work that the county has done to address the flooding issues that Lamont and surrounding areas face. We hope that that same level of detail is committed to address flood needs in other unincorporated areas in the county. Since these budget meetings occur in the summer, it's very easy to forget that rainfall has a significant impact on certain communities. And I do want to highlight one community in particular, Rexlin Acres. When it rains, certain streets, businesses, and residential areas are significantly impacted by flooding. It makes walking, driving, as well as busing to school and from school quite difficult. So we again are asking for the county, for the county to do a county-wide flood risk assessment and flood mitigation plan. Planning for these repetitive occurrences can help save the county money in the long run, instead of repeatedly addressing the symptoms, but not the root causes of certain issues. We ask you to assess this issue and develop a plan to adequately mitigate the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. We'll be next. Gustavo Aguirre Sr.
Gustavo Aguirre Sr. with Center on Race, Poverty, and Environment. As, I think as the other people that are spoken, people that will speak, we have been meeting with most of the supervisors, org, your staff, and different entities at the county level, expressing the priorities of the communities. One of the priorities is the streets and complete, what we call complete streets. And streets view, building and maintaining basic infrastructure improves community safety and health, increase neighborhood cohesion, and increase criminal activities. So that's, that's one of the areas. And what we call complete streets is investing, including building and maintaining roads, sidewalks, drainage systems, pedestrian crossings, bike lines, and streetlights, to mention some. And thank you for considering other requests that we saw some changes are made and included on community's priority. But this evening, we see that I think you were able to find more funds to dedicate to the sheriff's office. And previously, we mentioned that, you know, safety, community safety doesn't come only in the form of a sheriff. We are not against the sheriffs. We need them, but we need to also invest in prevention, not only just dealing with the issues when they come. So one of the, the recommendations is maybe to increase the Public Works Department so they can capitalize on potential funding sources, either state or federal sources. Sometimes when we met with them, they said that, you know, they need to prioritize which grants they are going to follow and apply because they have limited capacity. So that may be one way of, you know, getting more funds to invest more in, in the community's infrastructure. So we encourage you to do that. And just a few words in support of county employees. I have a 25-years background of labor, being farmworker and working for, with union representation. When you work as a, with a union representation, I was always told that union workers do the best work because we appreciate the benefits and, and the salaries. So I encourage you, the supervisors, to really pay attention to, to, you know, the county employees, which are providing the services to, to us. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm not nervous today. My name is Diana Mireles, and I'm a member from the Comité Progreso de Lamont, and also the part of C U, C U team. Today, first, I want to thank to everyone who we meet with you guys in talking about parks and the flooding in Lamont, especially in Lamont. But today, I want to focus on, on the streets, on complete streets. I would like, encourage you to set aside some money and the budget for the complete streets. And some of the meetings that we have in person with you, we are, we already passed some of the needs for the communities. And in Lamont especially, we need to build sidewalks and the Georgia between Woods Edition and Highway 184 and Main Street. The second, build sidewalks, curb and garters, all streets and Woods Edition. This neighborhood especially needs a lot of help. This is our majority, priority, and the Comité Progreso, because they don't have nothing, not carbon gutter, not sidewalks, and it's not fair for the children who go to the bus stop, and when it's raining, it's everything just mad, mad. I'm sorry, my English is not perfect.
Okay.
So also, create sidewalks east side and middle and south side of Segru, and create sidewalks north side of Hall Road between San Diego Street. This one, I... This one, I believe, we already worked on it, so I think we are like almost done on this. So, potholes, filling, and road repairs. I know some of those streets are already like done, but it's more streets that still need to fix. Creation of walking path to students on Highway 184 between McKee Road and Mountview Road. This one is already in there, but it's not enough for the kids still. When it's raining, the mud and the water is still in there. So again, I want to thank everyone, all the staff, for all your help, and hope we continue working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Estela Escoto.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Estela Escoto.
Soy miembro del comité para un mejor Arvin.
I am a member of the committee for a better Arvin.
Y participo con comunidades unidas.
And I participate in...
Comunidades.
United Communities or comunidades unidas.
Estoy aquí para pedirles a los supervisores...
I am here to request to the supervisors...
Pongan por favor atención...
To please pay attention...
...en las calles que están en muy mal estado.
To the streets that are in bad condition.
Que conectan con la ciudad de Arvin.
Those streets that connect to the city of Arvin.
Algunas de ellas son la Edison...
Some of those include Edison Road.
La Rancho.
Como?
Rancho.
Rancho.
La Sycamore.
Sycamore.
Por mencionar algunas.
Just to name a few.
Esas calles son las que los residentes de la ciudad de Arvin...
Those streets are the ones that the residents of the city of Arvin...
Usan para llegar a sus trabajos.
Used to get to their employment.
Esperamos que ustedes puedan hacer algo...
We hope that you can do something.
...para evitar que causara algún accidente en alguna de ellas.
To avoid any accidents occurring on any of those streets.
Ya que hace como dos semanas en la esquina de la Edison y la Sycamore...
About two weeks ago on the corner of Edison and Sycamore...
Está bastante dañado ahí.
It's very badly damaged there.
Y mi esposo cayó en el bache, en el hoyo que se encuentra en esa área.
Se cayó?
Sí, su carro, su carro.
My husband, his car went into one of those potholes.
Y la verdad que se dañó todo lo que es la parte de su llanta del carro.
And tire of his vehicle, his car was damaged.
No nos pasó nada a nosotros.
Nothing happened to us.
Y por eso les pido a ustedes que pongan atención en esas calles.
That's why I request that you pay attention to those streets.
Que están demasiado dañadas.
They are very badly damaged.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es Gabriela Ojeda.
My name is Gabriela Ojeda.
Soy del comité para un Arvin mejor.
I am a member of the committee for a better Arvin.
Y también participo con comunidades unidas.
And I also participate in the United Communities.
Y lo mismo que mi compañera mencionó, estoy aquí.
The same thing that my companion just said, I'm here for the same reason.
Por las carreteras que usamos para llegar a la ciudad de Arvin y que usamos para salir de ahí.
The roads we travel to go in and out of Arvin.
Hace unas tres semanas, mi hija tuvo un accidente, cayó en un hoyo, y también se le ponchó la llanta. Ella venía de trabajar.
Six weeks ago, she fell in a hole, her car?
La llanta se metió en el hoyo.
Okay, a couple weeks ago, my daughter also fell, her car went into one of those potholes and damaged her tire.
Y tuvimos que tener esos gastos de que lo fueran a recoger, el carro, y cambiar lo que se dañó.
For that extra expense of having to go get the car and repair the tire.
Y también trabajo en el campo, y son calles que usamos todos los días para llegar al trabajo, para regresar del trabajo.
I'm also a farmworker, and we use those roads to go back and forth from work every day.
Y es bien difícil para nosotros, especialmente cuando hay que ir muy temprano, cuando todavía está oscuro.
It's very difficult for us, especially when it's real early in the start, when we have to go to work.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Where is the pothole that...
Donde?
Es en la Harris y la Rancho.
Harris y Rancho. On Harris...
Herring, Harris or Herring?
Herring or Harris? Herring?
Herring.
Harris.
Harris?
It's Harris or Herring?
I think it's Herring.
I think it's Herring.
No estoy segura.
I'm not sure.
We'll find it.
Lo vamos a encontrar.
Okay. Pueden ir por todas esas calles...
We'll drive around Rancho until we find a big hole.
You can travel on any of those streets, and they're all the same.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Saúl Ruiz, soy el presidente del comité Lost Hill in Acción.
Saúl Ruiz, good afternoon, my name is Saúl Ruiz, I am the president of Lost Hills in Action.
Y venía a pedirles por el puente que está en proceso en el Highway 46 y Lost Hill.
I'm here to request that the bridge is in the process of being built on 46, okay?
Y Lost Hill Road.
And Lost Hills Road.
Y la banqueta alumbrada que pedimos del...
And the lighted sidewalk that we are requesting.
Del parque Al Campo de Trailas.
In the park behind the trailer parks.
Y los stoplights.
And the stoplight.
Y las luces de alumbrado.
And some lighting.
Es todo, muchas gracias.
That's all, thank you very much.
Are these the same projects that we met about?
Eso es lo mismo, pero esto es lo que ya nos reunimos.
Sí.
Yes.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Estela Pérez.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Estela Pérez.
Vivo en Lairo Avenue, en las afueras de Delano.
I live on Lairo Avenue on the outskirts of Delano.
Hoy venimos, mis vecinos aquí presentes, y yo...
I am here tonight with my neighbors who are here present.
...a pedirles una vez más por nuestra calle, Lairo Avenue.
To request one more time for our street, Lairo Avenue.
Tenemos vecinos viviendo ahí más de 20 años.
We have neighbors who have been living there for over 20 years.
Y yo tengo 13 años viviendo en esta calle.
I've been living on this street for 13 years.
Y nunca el condado o Ciudad de Delano ha querido pavimentar esta calle.
And neither the county or the city of Delano have ever wanted to lay pavement on that street.
Esta es la razón por la que queremos recordarles una vez más...
That is the reason we wish to remind you one more time.
Que cuando llueve, se hace mucho lodo y se inunda la calle.
Then when it rains and turns into mud and the streets are flooded.
Este, tenemos muchos hoyos y pasan nuestros niños, estudiantes...
We have many potholes there, and our children, students have to pass through there.
...para agarrar el camión para ir a la escuela.
To take the school bus.
Todos los que vivimos ahí somos gente trabajadora...
All of us that live there, we're all working people.
...que tenemos que usar la calle muy temprano para ir a nuestros trabajos.
And we must take that street to get to our jobs early in the morning.
Este, les agradecemos de antemano su atención...
We appreciate your attention beforehand.
Y ojalá que puedan ayudarnos y encontrar fondos para nuestra calle.
And hopefully you can help and work with us to find funds for our streets.
Este, muchas gracias a todos.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yes.
Could I...
Gracias.
Could you leave your contact information, phone number? I have some news on that that I'd like to give to you.
Tengo una actuación que demostrar darselos. Ajá, muy bien.
Thank you.
Aquí el papel.
Yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jesús Alonso. I'm from the Lamont community, and I'm here to ask you for your support, for you to support a budget that prioritizes our disadvantaged communities. And as many have said before me, the way that looks like is lighting in the streets, lighting in our parks, sidewalks for our community members, our elderly, and our youth to be able to walk on the way to the pharmacy, on the way to the market, on the way to school, so that they don't have to put their lives at risk every time they go for a walk. Too many times, we have seen near accidents and accidents in our communities because of a lack of a sidewalk. Another way we can also, I ask you to also focus on activities and programs in our communities and in our parks. I've seen firsthand, and I'm sure all of you have, the difference a good program does in the life of a young person, and how a good program is able to give them a very successful life, and they even go on to become mentors in our community. And finally, to also focus on the flood zone issue. In Lamont, the fact that we are in a flood zone has hindered a lot of educational, economical, and economical opportunities for our community, preventing our community from growing like some communities around us. So I ask you again to please support a budget that prioritizes our disadvantaged communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alonso. He'll be next.
Good evening, Chair, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jasmine Delagila with Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability. I'm here to thank you for holding the space for public comment. It's very much appreciated, and also just to kind of repeat and bring to attention the importance of investment in our disadvantaged communities. As an environmental justice organization, we strive to advocate alongside community members for these very things that, like my colleague said, your zip code should not determine how long you live, but unfortunately, it does today, and that is why it's so important to invest in infrastructure and flooding, right? It all affects our residents that are our workforce for this county. And if you mentioned, they mentioned, you know, they have multiple incidents, and that's why we encourage the board to invest and keep investing in our communities to provide a safe and healthy environment that is going to prosper in the long run for the county. We are grateful to see the county investing in parks, because we know that studies show that having green spaces is really important in the health of our community, our children. And for that reason, we have residents here who want to show their appreciation of their investments in parks today, and just once again, want to encourage and thank the board for hearing us, right? Hearing us, and most importantly, taking action. A lot of times, you can hear us, but not take action, and so we really appreciate you taking steps forward to really bridging this health equity that very, unfortunately, in many communities is still an issue. So thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Joanna Coronado, and I am from the Casa Loma community. I'm a resident in the Casa Loma community, and I'm here to present my things for allocating a grant for our parks during, around that area. That grant is really important to us in our community, as most of us are below the income level, that those places have been known to hold like high crime level rates. And for you guys to show concern and be willing to give us something for our community, we really appreciate it. It's really important for, not only for us, the adults, but for our children to go out, go play, to live a healthy life, to be able to grow into healthy young adults that will one day take over the jobs positions you guys have right now, the ones that our future children hold for the county of Kern. So as a resident for the Casa Loma community, I would like to once again thank you guys for allocating a grant for our parks. Really appreciate it for us right now and for our future children. Thank you.
Could you give us your name again?
Oh, Joanna Coronado. Would you like me to spell it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
They need it, for the record.
Ah, okay. The last name or first name or both?
Last name.
Last name, C-O-R-O-N-A-D-L.
Oh, thank you.
Mi nombre es Teresa Macías.
My name is Teresa Macías.
Y soy la mamá de Joanna Coronado.
I am the mother of Joanna Coronado.
Soy voluntaria de la Casa Loma.
I am a volunteer at Casa Loma.
Y hoy vengo a decirles gracias...
And today, I'm here to express my thanks to you.
...por tomar en cuenta nuestra comunidad.
For considering or taking into account our community.
Sabemos que como padres estamos convencidos que una educación temprana, a temprana edad, hace la diferencia.
As parents, we're convinced that education at an early age makes a big difference.
Y reconozco el trabajo de ustedes...
I recognize your work.
...de estar invirtiendo en nuestra escuela, en nuestras comunidades.
For being involved in our schools and our communities.
Y asimismo, también les quiero pedir...
In the same manner, I would like to request from you...
Que en nuestros parques incluyamos centros comunitarios...
That we include a community centers in our parks.
...con actividades de ciencia, arte...
With science, art, activities.
De STEM, como S-E-T. Actividades de ciencias...
Science.
Arte.
Arts.
Matemáticas.
Mathematics.
Se escribe en inglés así. I'm sorry.
STEM, STEM program.
Para todos los niños.
For all the children.
Porque de esa manera contribuiremos a tener adultos productivos.
In that manner, we can contribute to having productive adults.
Muchísimas gracias una vez más.
Thank you very much one more time.
Thank you.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Gemma Pérez.
Good afternoon, my name is Gemma Pérez.
Soy miembro de Greenfield Walking Group y de Comunidades Unidas.
A member of the Greenfield Walking Group and United Communities.
Lo malo de ser la última es que ya todos dijeron lo que quería decir.
The bad thing about being last is everything I wanted to say has already been said.
Pero siempre voy a estar aquí para dar las gracias.
But I'll always come here and give you my thanks.
Porque por más de 10 años, el condado ha apoyado mucho a nuestro grupo.
Because for over 10 years, the county has supported our group.
Y muy especialmente quiero dar las gracias a supervisor Scrivner.
I would especially like to thank Supervisor Scrivner.
En esta ocasión porque los fondos que van a ser destinados para el parque de Greenfield...
Because the funds earmarked for the Greenfield Park...
Va a ser un paso muy importante.
Will be a very important step.
Porque este parque está siempre habitado por homeless.
Because this park is always, it always has homeless people there.
Y ya es tiempo que la comunidad recupere su parque.
And it's about time the community takes back their park.
Gracias por su apoyo...
Thank you for your support.
Y siempre vamos a estar aquí para hacer lo que esté a también posible para que eso llegue a suceder.
And we will be here to do whatever possible to ensure this comes to fruition or happens.
Solo hay que ponernos de acuerdo.
We just need to agree.
Gracias, sí, buenas noches.
Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Pérez.
Good evening, County Board of Supervisors and Mr. Chairman. I'm still unfamiliar with the etiquette of one elected giving public comment to the other electeds, but you know, I'm still constituent of District 4.
Councilman Brian Osorio.
Yes, my name is Brian Osorio, and I'm a council member for the city of Delano. So I, first of all, I want to say, you know, I was looking at this four-year deficit mitigation plan, is very impressive to see how much the deficit has decreased over the four years, or expected to decrease in four years. But the cost I don't see on paper is the emotional distress, the anxieties, the fears, that many people have given public comment, Delano residents in SEIU, and other county employees from Delano. And so I'm here to stand in support, in solidarity with SEIU, but also, you know, urge you all to reconsider the current county budget as it stands. I know it's far easier said than done, but in the end, you have the potential, the ability, the capability to change the lives of many, many residents in Kern County. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming. If there are others who would like to speak, could we get you to come to the front row so we can get you to the microphone quickly? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Suzie Baker. I've been here before to say a few words for, I am a county worker for Bakersfield, or Kern Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. It's hard to change that name after 20 years. I came on board as a county worker in 1996. Since then, I have seen this county flourish, and wonderful things happen in the mental health system. It's grown, I've been here, it's been a privilege to go through three directors. Bill Walker's now my director. And I just wanted to say, I come to say that we go into places, we go into homes, to seek out families and help them along the way. I have a unique position, which is really cool. I'm a parent partner. I got into this because after everything... I got into this because after everything I had to learn myself with special needs kids, it was such a hard walk to walk through every single agency. But I made it my goal not to allow another parent to go through that alone. I stay here because that's my belief, regardless of whether I've had a raise or not since 2009. Many of our workers go into places that public health nurses won't go into without masks and gloves. Our sheriff's department and our police department tell us you shouldn't be in there without, you know, an escort. We do this because we believe in what we do. And we value the families that we work for and we serve. I just want to come and share that with you because so many of my colleagues that I work with are struggling financially. Me one of them, I got special need adult children, raising special needs children now. And I have six generations in the soil, so I love my community. But I just want to say, think about us, we go into places that other people won't go into without protective gear because we love what we do and we love serving others. So, for those of us that haven't been able to make it to Disneyland or to Magic Mountain in the last nine years, I just want to represent them and say, you know, we love what we do, but it would really be nice to be recognized for what we do. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dora Jara, the last name is J-A-R-A. I am representing La Colonia, which is in the unincorporated area of Kern County, three miles south of Shafter. And we really appreciate the collaboration that we've had with Supervisor Couch's office. I know we're just starting to implement some programs, but I would like to really encourage you to funnel some funds to improve the quality of life of all our residents, young, seniors alike. I know there are some funds that will be allocated for recreation. Aside from those, we need curbing, speeding on Burbank Avenue. In order to, for dust control, we need funding for sidewalks. And I know this is just a bit of a recreational facility that you're looking at, but we are one of the disadvantaged communities probably that we don't have recreational facilities as such. So, I look forward to working with Supervisor Couch from now on and I really appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melanie Dahlsted. I moved here 18 years ago because my dad was ill. And I was blessed by the county of working at the Kern County Fire Department. I was on the negotiation team three years ago. And some of the stuff that I've heard tonight about the bedbugs was talked about during that time. So I'm surprised that there is still an issue with that. But I also liked for you to encourage you to go back, as they would say in negotiations, to the table and reconsider the budget so that we can give our general employees a raise. I haven't received one in 10 years and I really think that it's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jose Gonzalez and good evening to all the supervisors and chairman. Here to represent the community of Lamont and the Greater Lamont Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to have you guys consider resurfacing some of those roads in the community of Lamont. It's not enough to just fill a pothole because those potholes come right back. Take a look at Hall Road, Palm Road and Malaga. And on your way to Arvin, there's plenty of roads with big potholes. Those potholes come back after it rains. So, I would like for you guys to consider resurfacing these roads. Reconsider resurfacing the roads in Lamont. Reconsider putting more infrastructure in Wood Edition, Reynolds Track. All these areas deserve better. I'm also, and wanted to support all the county employees, they deserve better. They deserve to be treated better and they deserve to get a raise. If they haven't received a raise, we gotta invest in our employees so that we have a better community and better services for our residents. Thank you.
Any other speakers tonight? Anybody who, I'm sorry, were you coming down to speak? Okay, sorry. No other speakers tonight? Okay, I'll return to the board, any questions, comments? This is just a public hearing, we don't need to, we're not taking any action.
Thank you, Chairman, I'll be brief, I promise, thank you. I just wanted to speak to the Casa Loma residents that were here tonight and I'm sure you've heard the rumblings, but it is a really remarkable and unprecedented investment that is taking place in the STEM school by BCSD in the MLK corridor that we are now joining forces with the city, the county, multiple layers of funding. We will be leveraging opportunities to the tune of 70 million plus for a region that has been so grossly underserved and neglected. It is very exciting, it is a community project, it's an opportunity to really bring the community into the park upgrades, into the community economic development that we are launching there in the fall. So, to the Casa Loma people who spoke about the STEM school, I'm so, so thrilled that you're familiar with the investment that's taking place there. 70 million, 40 million to the school, 30 million in technology. Totally unprecedented, totally exciting, never been done before. Councilman Rivera and I, of course, are joining together in a first-ever joint city-county project to take on a limited amount of blocks and really infuse it with beautiful park upgrades along with significant economic development. So, this is exciting, hasn't been done before, I'm glad the community is paying attention, but please continue to watch because this kind of investment hasn't occurred before. I'm doing multiple rounds of CDBG funding, multiple rounds of park funding. My colleagues have all been supportive of that process, I'm grateful for that. And you're going to see major changes in that community here very soon. And it's the kind of community-wide, you know, networking that we should be thinking about when we leverage these dollars at the federal and state level. It's very effective, it's very good for the community. It's good to build community and to bring that community together in a way that's going to put people to work, focus on frankly, the academic achievement of young black boys in that community, that's our initial focus. And I know that the whole community will benefit from that. But it's a very exciting time, we're taking it very seriously and working with the city and leveraging these dollars, as you know, they are limited. But we can do a lot with this money, in particular when the community is engaged. So, pay attention to that, that project's rolling out. As we speak, 70 million dollars into these young kids and of course, a very broad mentorship program that we think is really transformative for this community and the county. So, I'm excited about that, appreciate your support and stay tuned. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Super Supervisor, I don't see any other, Super Supervisor, I'll make a brief comment and then we'll adjourn. I want to thank those of you for coming tonight and speaking. Someone told me a long time ago that counties get every job that nobody else wants to do or is willing to do. That means every one of you, whether you're sheriff, fire, you know, animal services, human services, whatever it is, it's a hard job. And part of the reason I went not only to the DHS building the other day, the Kinship Building, was just to say thank you, we don't do that often enough and it's completely inadequate. But what the work that you do every single day is invaluable. And I want you to know that we recognize it. And I also want you to know that it may not look like, you know, you're going, we're going through a budget process and it might not look like a lot of work is going on or you're, but you're just not seeing a lot of it. And I can promise you, Mr. Alonso, how often do we have on our agenda an update or a discussion about just all the different bargaining groups and all the different negotiations? It seems like it's every week, but it may not be, but it's frequent.
It's pretty much every week.
Yeah, so I want you to know that we are in constant discussion about what can we do for this group? What can we do for that group? What do they need? And we are discussing it, thinking about it, trying new things. And frankly, in some cases pushing the envelope, told we can't do certain things. But your requests and your words are not falling on deaf ears, I just want you to know. Thank you for coming again tonight and without, just need a motion to adjourn to tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM.
Still.
Without objection, we adjourn, thank you.